I guess it's eight o'clock, so I'd like to call to meeting, uh, to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, March 11th. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. While I care, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, that, we will move on to item number three, which is the First Selectwoman's comments. Not really much to report. Obviously, the budget is still kind of in process, so the Board of Finance is in the, in the midst now of having their conversations on the budget, um, with the expectation of a hearing in April, and then the vote on May 6th. Also to highlight again that, you know, the Board of Selectmen last week, is looking to move forward with taking the Academy question to the May 6 referendum as well. So that'll be a question on the ballot. That conversation continues with the Board of Finance. They're still gonna, they still need to schedule a special meeting that would then go to a town meeting, which basically would kind of procedurally just adjourn to referendum. Um, and so there'll be more information over the next couple of weeks on the website about the referendum. We're kind of working on those materials and we'll be sending lots of notifications to the public about that. So, um, with that, turn it over for any, um, you know, liaison reports or selectman comments.
I'll, uh, since somebody's raising their hand, uh, really more of a comment and a shout out, um, to Sarah Reed and our building department. Often, um, we hear from residents about how they've had a bad interaction with the town. And, um, this is one of those situations where a resident went out of their way to contact me to say that they'd had an extraordinarily pleasant and productive interaction with Sarah. They had a time-sensitive need, um, she was on it, um, and took care of that resident's need. And, um, so, uh, kudos to her and, uh, thank you.
That's great, great. Yeah, nice to get those, those, we do get those positive feedback sometimes, but not a lot, as you said. Uh, I think people just kind of obviously take for granted, you know, government is here and working hard. And, um, so I always judge how, uh, it on the number of complaints, which is not a lot. But, uh, so thank you for sharing that, Bruce. I appreciate that. Sarah does a great job. Any other, uh, comments or reports? No? Yeah, I know.
I do.
Oh, you do? Okay, go ahead.
Um, so, uh, was it last week or maybe it was the week before? I can't remember now. I think it was last week, last Tuesday, I participated in the Madison Youth and Family Services, kind of in-service training. Uh, it was an opportunity to bring the board together, uh, with all of the employees. And we did some team-building exercises and kind of, uh, peeked inside the window a little bit of what, um, some of the services are, are done inside of Madison Youth and Family Services. So it was a, it was a great session, uh, great opportunity to learn, great opportunity to just talk to each other and, you know, make sure that we understand who's who in the zoo. Uh, but it was, um, it was an awesome opportunity just to sort of see them in, uh, you know, in their light and in their lane of how they work. Uh, second comment, um, I guess I, you know, just kind of dovetailing off of Peggy's, uh, the announcement that she put out there on social media, uh, the comments related to some very insensitive, uh, comments on social media related to, um, uh, some employees, some town employees and Madison Youth and Family Services. I guess, um, as the liaison for Madison Youth and Family Services, I was super disappointed in how that played out and the comments that were, um, conveyed relative to specific individuals and even just youth and family as a whole. Uh, you know, I know that, um, you know, the work that they're doing is important and, uh, we thank them for that. I think the temperature on social media has gotten a little out of control. And I think if we can, you know, certainly as leaders, help to try to bring that temperature down, that would be, uh, helpful. I know Peggy, your, your statement was perfect and I thought that was a great, you know, start. But I think, you know, again, all of us as leaders, you know, some of us are on social media, some of us are not, really need to take an active role in doing that. And I, and I just, I guess, lastly, as I, as I reflect on what ultimately happened, I really do feel like there are appropriate ways to communicate and inappropriate ways to communicate. And, you know, whether it's, you know, picking up the phone, um, whether it's using the Board of Selectmen email address, whether it's, you know, calling the Director of Madison Youth and Family Services directly, there's opportunities and channels available to communicate. And I think, um, I would hope that social media is not the first channel to be used, um, in, in these types of situations. I know it's easy, but, but it may not necessarily be the most appropriate. So, that's it.
It's a great message, Scott. Um, we see this even oftentimes in the summer. People will take photos and post things that they don't like at the beach and just put it out there rather than just contacting the Director of Beach and Recreation or contacting my office and saying, hey, this needs to be fixed or this needs to be handled better. So, we just asked you be respectful, um, how you want to be treated in your job as well. You don't necessarily want to be publicly shamed before you have an opportunity to respond or to correct an issue or a problem. So, um, so I think it's a great message. Any other comments or? No? Okay. All right. We'll move on then, uh, to item number six on the agenda. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as, um, written.
I moved.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right. Uh, item number seven, um, uh, discuss and take action to accept donations pending Board of Finance approval from Neighbor to Neighbor in the amount of $10,000 to Madison Youth and Family Services for residents in need of emergency funding where there are no other programs. And B, the Madison Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $10,000 to Beach and Rec for a fountain pump for Texas Pond and continued maintenance of the pump and, and fountain.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, these, it's a little kind of confusing because they're not really related, but a lot of times we take these donations and put in the consent agenda. But first, we wanted to highlight, obviously, $10,000 is a very generous donation. We're grateful, once again, Neighbor to Neighbor has been a really important source of funding for, uh, our neediest residents. So we're grateful for that. The second item has to do with, you know, Texas Pond. You know, there's like a little fountain there and, um, I guess it was years ago, um, it, the chamber had responsibility for this pump. Um, it needs to be replaced, I think, and, um, but they want to turn that back over to the town. The, the chamber's kind of like, why are we responsible for this, like, operating pump for something in the middle of town? And I don't know if, uh, if we have questions, Austin's here. He's been the one interacting with the chamber on this. Uh, I don't know, Austin, are you on, is Austin online, Jeannie?
He is. He's coming up.
Okay, great. So he can give a little bit more of the background of this, but it was one of these head-scratcher's, which I often find in this job, be like, oh, I didn't know the town had owned that or I didn't know the town was responsible for that. So, um, Austin, if you could kind of highlight the, uh, story here.
Sure. So the pump, uh, and the fountain at Texas Pond, um, has been inoperable for a couple of years. And the chamber, um, they were given a donation through, uh, Gunner Johnson. If you remember, uh, our friend Gunner from, uh, a few years ago, uh, when he passed, he left money to the chamber to maintain, um, the pump and the, the fountain. Uh, it's just really out of the scope of, of things that the chamber does. Um, so we'll take it over. And then with these funds, we'll purchase a new pump, get the fountain back in action and then, um, you know, put it in, take it out every year and, you know, we'll maintain it and make it look like it's supposed to look.
Austin, doesn't that pump also, uh, serve a purpose for the health of the pond?
It does. When you move the water around, instead of it being stagnant, it, it helps, um, with the health of the ponds. Uh, we probably need to look into doing some dredging there to clear some of the overgrowth out. Uh, but that's a, a future project that we can, we can tackle.
Be nice to see that back.
Years has it been offline? Has it been?
Been a while.
A couple, anyway.
Yeah, wow.
All right. Well, any other further questions on that, on item, uh, 7A or 7B? No? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, great. I know, Austin, you'll be joining us again later in the meeting, so we'll see you back.
Thank you.
All right. Um, item number eight is a discussion of recent legislation regarding motor vehicles assessment. And I'm going to have, uh, Stacy and Orietta, uh, join us. Um, and basically what happened was, um, a year ago or two years ago, the legislature changed the way we value, uh, motor vehicles, um, in, in, you know, for tax purposes. And they moved from a kind of market value type approach every year to a, here's the manufacturer's suggested retail price and now here's a depreciation schedule depending on the year of your car. And it was kind of trying to address some volatility, because if you recall, you know, uh, car prices went through the roof at one point during the pandemic. And so all of a sudden cars, you know, that were, their value went up versus down, you know, which was causing problems. And so they thought, well, let's just find a simple way to be consistent that would help communities out, you know, from a budgeting standpoint and everything else, look at their motor vehicles. So what they did is they passed this, uh, depreciation schedule, um, that basically says in the first, after a year, your car is now worth 85% of what, um, uh, the suggested retail price is. Problem was that's, that was kind of an aggressive schedule or, or not, not aggressive schedule. It says, i- i- it drops down the value significantly right off the bat and then it kind of goes down to 5%. You were sent, and that's taken a big hit to a lot of towns' grand lists, because we're in this transition period. Um, and so then there was a scramble, which we sometimes see, happens in Hartford, um, to try to address this. Um, for us, our motor vehicles, if we use the, the existing depreciation schedule, we see an 8% drop in our grand list then, um, and so other towns have, are seeing even higher in terms of their, not total grand list, but real, uh, motor vehicle grand list. And so they, in order to repair this, they wanted to maintain the approach of using, because this is a good long-term approach of using MSRP, uh, but what they did is they reduced the amount that would be depreciated in that first year and then it just pushes everything out by 5%. So that's what the schedule is. So we have a window here to adopt this new depreciation schedule. We have to do either the one they passed last year, which is the 85% in the first year, or we can adopt the new one that starts at 90% in the first year. And this would basically, we would just live with this going forward. Um, there are a lot of towns that are considering doing this because it's been such an impact on the taxes or on the, um, uh, grand list. The impact for us is, is meaningful. It's, um, equates to, uh, $450,000 roughly of revenue, um, that if we adopted the new, the adjusted schedule, um, we would, you know, our revenue would be, um, $450,000 higher. And so that does help us with mill rate calculations and everything else. And so I wanted, I'll let Stacy, she's got some just numbers for you to share. Uh, Orietta, I know, is, she's on here for specifics. I'll be honest, we're flying dark a little bit about this. We're trying to get more information, because the other part of this that makes it a little more complicated is they're requiring you to have a appeal process without actually having sent out any kind of tax bills. So you adopt this, um, right away and then you have to offer an appeal process, even though no one's gotten a notification of what their car is worth, nor they have, they gotten a tax bill, because we haven't set the mill rate yet. So we're kind of completely confused about why this was thrown in there. Um, and we're trying to get answers on that. But, um, uh, anyway, so Stacy, why don't you walk through the high level, you know, the numbers?
Okay, yeah, I did. I sent out an email last night, hopefully you all got it, um, explaining exactly what Peggy said, the change of a 5% starting for the grand list 24, which will impact 25, 26 tax bills. So it, as Peggy said, it is a significant number. It does make a big difference. It will help the development of the mill rate when we get to that point. The big concern that we have is the, um, Board of Assessment appeals. I, I believe in, Orietta is here. She's just not on camera. She's right next to me. So if you have further questions, she can definitely chime in. But we had to issue the grand list. Normally it is submitted to the state on January 31st and then we allow BAAs in March and then we give a final modified grand list by May 1st, um, back to the state. So now we believe they added this to the new bill that we have to allow BAAs because we are modifying the original, um, grand list that was submitted. So, um, that being said, I don't think we're going to have enough time to get the results of any BAAs before the actual tax bills go out. I do not want to impact that piece of it. However, if there is a change during the BAA process, we will have the opportunity to do a change later on after, um, when we're in the new fiscal year and modify or submit a COC, a change, um, a correction. So the numbers we're looking at is about, so originally, as Peggy said, the motor vehicle was going down 8%, which brought our grand list, helped bring our grand list to a flat growth overall. So if we do do this, now our motor vehicle, um, will go up $20 million, which means it will now only go down 0.05%. So it's going down 8%. Now it's basically flat. Also by doing that, the total grand list before was a 0.01, basically flat. If we do this now, our total grand list will be going up about 0.5%. So it does help. It's about over 400,000, 450,000. That will help offset, um, our upcoming budget.
It, it's also a more reasonable depreciation schedule. So that, you know, every year if a new vehicle comes on, you buy a new car, um, you know, you get, it, it, you know, it depreciates 15% of it within the first year, which is pretty big number, you know, in terms of, so, so I feel like going forward, now it's going to be, it's going to depreciate to 10% in the first year. So this does have an impact in terms of sustaining that tax base, you know, um, in the future. Because each new car that gets added would be, uh, using this new depreciation schedule, correct? We kind of confirmed that this is, we would adopt this going forward. And this is, this is the schedule. So it would be the, the list, the schedule on the right. The downside is that obviously that means the taxes are going to be slightly higher for people on their motor vehicles than if we adopted the, uh, the list that's currently in place, the depreciation schedule in place. And I think the average was like $27 per car.
Yeah, so Orietta spent a lot of work to try to get an average, um, of all of our vehicles. She went back to all different years to see how the schedule would apply. She did, excuse me, she did it in the three different scenarios, the old way, the new way on the older depreciation schedule and then the revised way on the new depreciation schedule. So originally, um, from the original way, two years ago, an average tax bill looks like it could go up $56. By adopting this new revised schedule, it will only go up about $27. So it basically cuts the impact in half.
Stacy, is it fair to say that this new system would provide more predictability, both for the town and for the taxpayer?
I, I don't think so. I think it's just, uh, you know, a less aggressive, um, schedule that we're following. I think not, either, either way, I think that's the schedule you have and going forward, that's what we'll be using. So I do think either way, we'll know what, you know.
Well, the shift to MSRP, obviously.
It's shifting, absolutely.
That's going to happen no matter what. It's just what depreciation schedule we apply.
So who is, who is going to make the decision about what schedule gets adopted? Is it the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance?
No, it's Board of Selectmen. It's legislative body and specifically Board of Selectmen, we confirm that with council. Um, because it's kind of, I guess, we're adopting a policy. That's what's in the, um, in the legislation. So.
Well, I know this is just, uh, a discussion item today. I, um, well, there are so many problems with this depreciation schedule that, um, it's, I, I don't even. The 2024 depreciation schedule is the lesser of two evils. Um, I think my perspective is not preserving the mill rate. It is, um, preserving the tax burden on, um, on taxpayers, because this is, the, the new schedule represents a tax increase on cars.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, uh, relative to, uh, the, uh, existing schedule. Yep.
Yeah. Um, and both of the schedules are so disconnected from reality that it's shameful that we're saddled with the choosing between evil and less evil, um, in a schedule. A new car driving off the lot, um, is arguably not anywhere near close to 85% of its value in its first year. And, uh, I get that we had a, a bumpy couple of years because of COVID and used car prices, but it was a process that had worked for, I don't know, for as long as cars have been taxed. And so we threw the baby out with the bathwater and the process, but what's done is done. When it comes time to vote, I would be supporting the 2024 schedule.
Okay, that's why we're having a discussion today, because, um, I, I look at it as, this to me is more consistent, you know? Now you can pick one schedule or the other. The, the, the used car market is volatile. Um, and so at least this is predictability in terms of the taxes. I'm looking at it, obviously, in the short term, saying, hey, this gives us a, 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 a help this year because we've seen a, a big drop, because this is the transition year, right? So it helps us out. And I think it's a more even schedule if you go to the schedule, you know, uh.
Well, they both dropped 5% a year, so they're.
Right, but I'm saying that first year, you know, that first year, there's a, there's a swing. So, um, that's all. I, I was thinking this was maybe a good thing to do, but I wanted to talk to the board. I think this is something we should all be kind of aligned on doing. Um, so, uh, other thoughts?
I mean, I agree with Bruce. Just a quick Google search even shows you that depreciation, it's typically between 15 to 20% depreciation within the first year of buying a new car. And then for the next, up to year five, it depreciates by another 15, 10 to 15% per year. So the schedule, I agree, you know, with Bruce in terms of it being somewhat unrealistic in terms of what an actual car depreciation is according to, you know, multiple financial websites and car insurance websites as well. So that's not really consistent. I do appreciate the consistency of the 5% drop, the predictability year over year. I just question the initial, the initial jump-off point, so to speak.
Well, and I think the purpose was that it's a transition year, right? So that's why all these grand lists are taking a hit, because you had a different way of valuing that whole, um, amount of car, you know, all the cars were valued in a very different way and now we're going to a different way of valuing it. And I think they didn't quite realize how, what a big impact that was going to have on people in terms of the tax base, right? By making that shift, because I think you also had, we had a couple of years with a very robust, uh, um, secondary market for cars. Um, so you have like this perfect storm of things colliding. You're like going in and using a new valuation methodology, a new depreciation schedule. And oh, by the way, you've had this kind of adjustment going on in the car market. So, um, but I don't disagree with you in terms of, you know, it's more like you just got to pick what path we want to go down.
In the past, uh, people have been able to appeal based on the condition of their car, I think. I- i- is, is that impacted at all with the schedule?
They've really tightened that now, from what I understand. And I don't know, maybe if Orietta, is she still here? Because I know she had to get relieved to go to a court case.
She is here. Yep.
Yep. Um, so condition is not considered. It's, you're looking at strictly the MSRP and then, uh, from there, you apply the year, uh, that the car, you know, the year of the car and then depreciate it by that schedule.
So in a BAA, what would, what would be the reason that a BAA would change the value of a car? If they're not looking at the condition?
If there was a mistake.
If there is a mistake.
Yeah.
But they don't look at the condition necessarily.
And the MSRP, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that is because, how do you get into, you know, value? Now you got the BAA looking at, you know, um, oh, this has dent or this has an accident history and people are bringing in their car faxes or whatever. It gets, it gets into a very believered process, I guess. So, um, I think this is also, you know that there's a bigger conversation going on about the car tax, right? You know, we're one of the relics left in the country, along with a couple other New England states that even had this for cars for tax. So, and the problem is that it's a chunk and you're, you can't just eliminate it, right? The, that has to, it, then it's going to go shifting to real property even more, right? So, um, so I think this was trying to address some of those problems. But, um, curious Al and, and Scott, what are your thoughts?
Need to learn more about it. I feel kind of, yeah, I, I don't know enough about it to make an educated statement, candidly. But, I mean, it sounds like we're on the right path.
I mean, I think that, um, we would have to vote to adopt the new schedule. And we'd have to do it pretty quickly is the problem because of the timeframe.
Do we have to comply with the exact schedule that comes from the state? We don't, we can't like make any tweaks to it, right?
It's one or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's either you go with the, uh, 85 or you go with the 90 in that first year. Um, and, you know, clearly it has, on average, an impact to the taxpayer, what, which one we adopt. Um, but it also has a impact in terms of.
Grand list, yeah, it's a positive impact on the grand.
Yeah, so, um, uh, what are your? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead now.
I, I was going to ask Stacy, I, I realize it's up to the Selectmen to decide this, but Stacy, is, is one approach more fair or more rational in your mind?
I don't think I really have an opinion. I'm more about the, you know, logistics of what you pick and then just moving forward. I mean, the process that they put out there as far as the BAAs is a little odd to me, but I do think it's something that's required because we're modifying the grand list. Other than that, you know, whichever table we, we pick, we'll just move forward. And it really is, as Peggy said, it's this transition year that will make the difference. And then going forward, it will just change by the 5%.
What is the source document on the MSRP?
JD Powers.
JD Powers.
So is it, is it down to the VIN level? Is the, is the MSRP set at the VIN? Or is it just on the average, you know, I have a Toyota Camry XE and that's?
I believe they're looking at the VIN.
So what, what, if you have whatever features or whatever add-on.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking, because there can be a lot of variability in, um, in a model level, you know, that, you know, cars that are badged the same way on the back might have a, a, a significantly different MSRP.
True. Um, so I'm just thinking, because, you know, the reason I didn't have it as a vote was because this is kind of, it's, we just got this last week, right? So we've been scrambling too to understand a little bit more, but we would need to adopt this soon. So, um, it sounds like, you know, some of us are not supportive. They just think, you know, so why don't we, um, each do our own research? And really, we don't have to vote no, right? It's just more if we want to adopt it, then we have to have an affirmative vote. Um, I think otherwise we just do nothing and it just stays the way it is. So why don't we, um, you know, do some of our research and then if some minds have changed, um, you know, reach out to me and then we could schedule some sort of meeting, like probably next week, right? We would need to vote on this. Is that timing-wise, Stacy?
Yeah, as soon as possible. I know Ora has to issue the new grand list, um, by April 15th, yeah.
April 15th, but we also have to squeeze. So really, first week of April is when I think we, we would need to vote from this, probably by the end of this month, I would think, right?
Sooner than, as soon as we can, I'd like to just, yeah, make the decision and move on.
Okay, so why don't we kind of, we'll try to get some more information, let people, now you understand it a little bit. I, I encourage you to reach out to Orietta. Let's all do our own research and then kind of, if there is a desire to have this, uh, another meeting and a vote on this, we can organize that in the next two weeks. Does that make sense? Um, like I said, I'm, I'm looking at this purely from, this helps us out on our, our mill rate. We're taking an 8% hit to the grand list on the motor vehicles. And then going forward, I think it just gives us a very consistent, um, whether it's, reality is different, but, you know, we just went through a revale, right? You know, where we know the property values in town were all over the place. So, um, I feel like consistency is always a good thing. So, um, and at least we will have that no matter what schedule we pick going forward. Um, everybody will be treated the same.
So if I can make one more comment, the Board of Finance is in the heat of the budget process right now. They have So if I can make one more comment, the Board of Finance is in the heat of the budget process right now, they have a meeting tonight, and then next week. Um, they should be voting, you know, by next Tuesday, I believe, so this. If this is something that we're considering, it would be helpful, not that I'm putting a little pressure on you. Um, but it would be helpful to them if they knew that this, you know, would, would impact their decision making.
Well, and, and keep in mind, it does impact the mill rate, right? So if this is additional revenue to help work out. Uh, the mill rate to the target that we're hoping to help, you know, that does help all taxpayers, right? Uh, with the mill rate, so, um, it shifts the burden a little bit more onto the motor vehicles than it does, you know, so. Lots to think about, um, so why don't we plan on that then? We'll have a, uh, we'll kind of do our own homework, and then possibly have a follow-up conversation to, to, to take action on this, okay? All right, great, um, next is item number nine, um, and that is the discussion of next steps regarding the wastewater facilities plan. And I think, uh, Tom Hanson and, um, Trent will be joining us. I, I'll be honest, I've been, we were kind of talking about where are we on this, our board, because we had the, uh, draft of facilities plan sent to us. Um, I think the, their committee did some additional work after that. Um, and I think now it's at a point where. You know, I think we wanted to take this to the public as, conceptually, that their committee first, get some feedback from the public, and then. I know we wanted to weigh in more on implementation, right? Because there's a lot of like recommendations in the plan, um, but I'll let Tom talk about kind of status where we are right now. Tom, you gotta unmute yourself. There you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm sorry about the image here, I, I keep setting up Zoom to have my beautiful face on here with a nice background. And it never, never seems to work, so I don't know what I'm doing wrong, but, uh. Uh, anyway, here I am.
Here, I'm gonna send you a request, click on that and see if it'll let you do the request.
To start a video?
Yeah, did you get a request from me?
No. Well, we'll see.
That's okay, I mean, just go ahead and, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, there you are. Great.
Very handsome. Very handsome, very handsome, yes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, made my day. Sure, so, the, uh, the status is not much unchanged, we. We, we, we did our, our draft report. Um, with some recommendations, and those recommendations are along the line of. Um, teaming with DEEP for funding to, uh, improve, upgrade. Uh, septic systems in town that are in environmentally sensitive areas. And to assist homeowners, uh, to some extent with, with doing that work. You know, we have limitations in these environmentally sensitive areas, uh, including. Lot sizes and depth of groundwater, you, you, we've heard all this before, and our consultant has, um. Given us the draft report, which we gave to you, and they've also been discussing it with the state, because the state. Um, we, we're giving them a little advance notice as to what's coming their way. But what's next for us to do is. To have really a formal presentation by the consultant to the Board of Selectmen and the general public. And to solicit input, questions, concerns, um, which I'm sure everybody has. To, to fine tune that report. And modify the recommendations, and make sure that going forward, it's a plan that makes sense to. All of us, not only the WPCA, but the Board of Selectmen, and when we get some input from the general public. Um, how we might tweak those recommendations and things. And this is essential for the state to actually review the report thoroughly, that's a step that's, that's necessary. So we, we, the next step really for us is to set up a, a time and a format for a public meeting. Uh, to really get into the bells and whistles and the, and the reads of the, um. Of, of the recommendations, and, uh, it's, it's gonna take some time. You know, for us to finalize that and to get it over to the state, or. It, it's kind of a closed loop, because the state will probably bring back some comments early for us, even before we approve the report. Um, because they're, you know, they want to facilitate the whole process for the town, so, um. That's really what we're looking for, we're waiting for a date and a time to really consolidate all the. Input and, uh, and recommendations.
So I, would this be, I'm just trying to figure out, is this like a opportunity for the public to give feedback? Or is it just the opportunity for us, like, should it be a Board of Selectmen meeting, or should it actually be a? Public hearing, like your committee having a public hearing, and the Board of Selectmen is invited to attend that. And then you're gonna also take questions from the public.
Well, um. Yeah, I, I mean, there's different ways we can go, when you, when you say public hearing, um, does that imply some kind of a vote at the end?
No, it's just, um, it's just basically, it's meant for the public to ask questions, I guess, versus like, you know. If you want to come and, the consultant wants to come and, uh, present to us. Where the, the study is finally, you know, where, where it's at a point where you kind of are. Comfortable with your committee's done, I'm just wondering, is that better after you get comments back from the state? And you incorporate that, then you come to our board, or do you want to have public feedback prior to approving it?
Yes, public feedback prior to approving it, so if that's in the form of a public hearing.
Um, yeah.
Then that's what we can do.
Yeah, I think that would be good, I, I think then we would plan on attending that. Um, that would allow your committee to kind of get feedback from the public first. Incorporate some of that into your recommendations, and then our board would then get kind of the final that you want to present to us.
Okay, yep, that, that sounds like the plan, and. Our consultant would set up the hearing. Excuse me, um, I mean, we'll have them set up the hearing, but we, we need to get. You know, a, a date and a format, and they'll have to coordinate with. Uh, the town on, you know, notification, you know, when that goes out, those, those kinds of things, so.
Well, and, and I, a question is, you know, you may not know this, but does the grant require a formal public hearing before you adopt it? There might be a requirement for that sometimes, is this, or the state?
Well, the, the public hearing is part of a, a broader public participation program, which has to be done. We have to solicit input from the public.
Okay.
Uh, we must do that as part of the plan, then, um, if. The, uh, the Board of Selectmen, uh, if, when they see you, okay, so after public input, we, we modify the plan. And, um, based on the input, and then re-present it, I guess, to the Board of Selectmen. For a formal vote to say, yes, we, we, we want to adopt this plan, let's move it to the state for approval. And then they get to approve the plan in terms of, it's worthwhile for their funding or not.
Right, okay, and that's where our board needs to weigh in before we finalize anything for the state.
Yeah.
Because I know that there were some, um, areas that we had talked about, you know. How you're gonna implement these things, right? How are you going, you know, we talked about the wastewater management districts, and I think there's general consensus that was the better approach, you know? Not doing some broader, you know, uh. Sewer, you know, sewers or community systems, but, you know, property by property and wastewater management district. But I think it was more the, how you implement those districts, and then what are the requirements once you're in one of those districts? That's where I know there will be a lot of public opinions on that, and then our board hasn't really talked that through yet, you know? Like, what is it that we would be expecting? If you're in a wastewater management district, is there, how much time does somebody have to upgrade their system? Who pays for it, you know, all those tough questions?
Yeah.
I, I guess I'm trying to figure out, when do we have that conversation, you know? Because you've laid out, have you laid out that level of detail, and I apologize, I don't remember what's, uh, what's in the, in the last version of the report?
Yeah, it's, i- i- it's not in that level of detail, that would be. A further implementation task down the road when you establish an ordinance.
Okay.
Or, or, or code regulation, um, but the, uh. And, but the consultant will really be able to answer those questions as to what. The pros and cons of different approaches are for that, um, and that's really what the public hearing will try to draw out, say, um. You, you know, how, what's, what's the timeframe, you know, how do we advise people, you know, what, what's the requirement for. Upgrading a system, that kind of thing, but, um, right now, it's sort of a general description. Of these wastewater management districts, and in the district. You can actually choose, uh, different options, um, individual system upgrades. Little cluster systems, maybe two or three homes, that kind of thing, which goes a little bit beyond the public health code. Um, so. They'll be able to explain that in more detail, um, and in fact, there's a, uh. Just as an aside, I think it's tomorrow. The shoreline WPCAs are meeting, um, to talk about a new DPH regulation that's coming out. Which actually talks about wastewater management districts in the, the same way that we talked about them in the facilities plan. So, there might be a little bit more information coming out.
Okay.
And, and we might incorporate that as well, so. But right now, we're looking for a date for a hearing. Um, so everybody can get their ducks in a row and get out there and really present it to everybody.
Peggy, I'm wondering if the meeting with the public should be a public information session as opposed to a public hearing?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point, because sometimes hearing has a regulatory component, uh, yeah.
Right, right, that's what I was wondering about, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we should maybe call it a public information session, but I think it would be hosted by your committee. And I guess if you wanted, are you looking to do this like April or May, is that kind of the timeframe you're thinking? You need some time to prepare materials for that, so like May?
Yeah.
I think, what, I, I think it would be, just thinking about this, some of the areas most impacted, um, there are a lot of seasonal homes. So would it be better to have this, you know, in, I'm not trying to push this out, but is it better to have it like in June or July? When you might have more seasonal residents here, so they can, you know, participate? I mean, it will be on Zoom, so, and we'll send it out through, we'll have a hybrid, um, and it'll be recorded. But, and that's for your com- committee, you, you let us know what timeframe worked, makes the most sense, but, um. We will broadcast this so that whether people are here, you know, or not, they'll get notified, obviously if they sign up for notifications. To the town.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying about the summer residents, but, but I prefer sooner rather than later. Only because the, we're kind of dragging along, you know, we're, we're just kind of bumping along here without a lot of progress until we do that, so.
Okay.
I do, I do think though, um, Peggy, as, as we sort of lead up to whatever process we undertake here. I think that, I think there needs to be a little bit of a concerted communication challenge, uh, channel here, you know, something that. You know, really helps dumb this down for the public, not, not, but dumb, dumb it down's the wrong word, but you know what I mean, like. I think there needs to be a hook, simplified, and just a hook, a hook for the, the public, so that they understand what's in it for me, and why should I pay attention? Because I, if I just heard something about wastewater management, I, you know, listen, I. I might not pay attention, so, you, you know, I think we've got to make sure that there's sort of that. You know, community-ready communications.
Well, a- and I think to that point, one, one of the things, the ability we have is to ring fence neighborhoods that are gonna be impacted by this. So we send out our general alerts, but then what we can do is send a targeted message to people in neighborhoods that will. You know, that are being identified as part of these districts, right? Because the plan actually lays out the districts, doesn't it, Tom? I mean, it has, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, so I think that is worth, and maybe, you know, you have your first hearing or, or, or information session. Um, uh, and, you know, we, we obviously notify everybody that we can notify, but there could be, you know, a follow-up. Uh, later in the summer or something, that's all, because I just know that some of this is concentrated in areas that have a lot of, uh, seasonal. Seasonal homes.
Well. To Scott's, um, question, why, why don't we, uh, get something in the newspaper? I mean, we could do, I mean, the source carries a lot of local news and. Um, they talk about things at the selectmen's meeting and the board is, I mean, we, we could get the, a reporter to write. About the, uh, facilities plan, and that'll reach everybody, and we could put things in like, you know. It's gonna cost everybody a hundred thousand dollars, and a lot of people will come out for that.
Well, exactly, there's the what's in it for me, Tom, right? We just gotta make sure that there's some aspect of that, maybe not that point, but.
And, and, and he's just using that as a, that is not. We're not gonna, it's not gonna cost everybody a hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
What we should do, if we set up the date, um, then, you know, a couple of weeks before that. Publish, uh, an actual news article in, in the source, I think that will be the package that will, uh, give us everything we want.
Yeah, we can certainly, and I, I can, um, you know, if, I don't know if the source reporter, you have, I can, I can get his. Alert him to this and make sure that this gets covered, because I agree, this is important, um, and we need to have as much public feedback as possible. So I will, why don't we just plan on then, you get back to us. Uh, you, so you're thinking April or May is what I'm guessing, right? Uh, for this, depending on what the consultant and your committed, commission can do, uh, come back with some proposed dates. You know, our board will try to attend, obviously, um, and if for some reason, but I would say, don't do it around our schedules, well, uh, I'm sure. Several of us will be able to attend, we can also watch the video, um, because we'll make it a hybrid, uh, meeting, so we'll all try to endeavor to attend. Um, and then, um, Jeannie can coordinate, you know, getting messaging out and all that other stuff, uh, with our new communications person. So.
We'll have to pick a venue, um, maybe the, uh. May- maybe the senior center, I, I don't know, but. You know, where.
Yeah, that's, and that's set up for hybrid, so, um, if, that might be a nice option, actually, because people like to go to those, uh.
Yeah.
You know, uh, attend things there, um. Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll work with you to coordinate all that, you just need to kind of narrow down with your committee and the consultant. What dates is gonna be feasible for everything to be ready, and we'll get it moving. And then after that, you guys can maybe make some modifications based on public feedback, and then come back to us with kind of what your, your kind of final. Final is. Okay. Okay.
And, uh, what was I gonna say, um? All right, so, we have a meeting later this month with WPCA, and we'll, we'll get the consultant moving on that. And a- any, any thoughts about evening, daytime, afternoon, I mean, what?
I, I would recommend an evening meeting, because that's when most people feel they can attend, and we will set it up for hybrid, so you'll get people online. And we'll record it, so people can watch the presentation if they can't attend, you know, at that time. So I think like a seven o'clock is usually the time that we've been landing, sometimes we've had to do a little earlier just because of, you know. Whatever scheduling problems or schedules, but if you could do a seven o'clock meeting at the senior center, and we will arrange for hybrid, I think that would work well.
Okay, we'll get the ball rolling on that, and, um. We'll get back to you on that, then, okay, all right.
Okay, good, any other questions for Tom? No? Okay, great, we look forward to it, so. Um, thank you, Tom. Um, okay, moving on to item number ten is an update from the facilities department on Poulsen. The Poulsen Middle School Improvement Project, so we've got, um, Ben and, um, I don't know, Peter Anderson is on as well. But, um. You know, we had, uh, I think the last time we had an update was in the fall on this, Ben, so if you want to kind of just. Let us know where you are right now, obviously the public, you know, parents are eager to know what's going on.
Yeah, ready to go, uh, thanks for the invite to come talk Poulsen for a little bit. Uh, I'll actually back up beyond the fall, just to kind of give a quick recap of, uh, of some of the project history, the, the, the five-minute project history. Uh, so our original construction budget.
So our original construction budget, original project budget was established in a 2022 referendum. That was a referendum that also included the Neck River Elementary School and improvements to Brown School. Twenty one point five million of that gross referendum was allocated towards improvements at Poulsen. The intention there was, was to provide air conditioning to all the classrooms in the school, upgrades to the auditorium or upgrades to the gym and upgrades to the electrical system. Tied into that was a project that was contained in the SIP for 3.14 million dollars for a, a whole building generator to support the building secondary use as a community emergency shelter. So one and a half million of that 3.15 were, were grants. So that left a total budget of 24.6 million dollars, 24.7 million dollars. 3.14 of that was subsequently moved over to Neck River to, to deal with cost, potential cost overruns there that never really came to fruition. So we're hoping that money actually comes back to the Poulsen project. But as of right now, it's, it's not included there. So what we're calling the bond fund budget is about 18 million dollars and the overall project budget, including the SIP and grant funds is 21.2. So so far, we've had about 1.5 million in expenditures and encumbrances to date to handle all the design services and some preconstruction. Fast forward then to, to July of, of 2024. When I came on board, there was a design development estimate, the project hadn't yet moved into construction documents, thank God. Because the project was at 26.4 million dollars. At that point, the project, they've heard me use the term before, was very invasive surgery to the building. It was almost acting like the building didn't have any sort of mechanical systems and you were going to install everything brand new like it was a brand new school, which sounds great, but is very expensive to do on a school that wasn't designed for that type of system. So it went through three rounds of value engineering. Those are sitting on my desk when I started, then by August, we were at about 20.8 million dollars, down from 26.4. The problem was is the project at that point, like sometimes happens when you do aggressive value engineering, had strayed from its goals from the referendum. So for example, it wasn't even touching any of the existing air conditioning systems in the building that are 33 years old now. Everybody knew they were at the end of the life, which is why this, one of the reasons this project came to fruition. About 50% of the mechanical equipment in the school, that wasn't being touched. The auditorium was kind of watered down to just having some new seating and leaving, leaving all the hazardous building materials in place. We were very far from where I think the community wanted this project to be and what we wanted to accomplish. The other problem was it was going to take many years to do this, just because of the disruption that it would cause to the school. So it'd either be all second shift work, which is very expensive, or be several mobilizations, which increases your construction management time, your general conditions time. It'd also be constant moving around the school. The principal wasn't happy with any of those options, I don't blame her. So we're like, okay, stop, it's time to look at this project in a new way. So what we did in September, starting in September, was just kind of do a refocus. And I said, let's get back to what we wanted to accomplish through the referendum. Let's get cooling in all the classrooms, let's renovate the gym and the auditorium, let's do the electrical upgrades, obviously, that's part of the, the grant project as well. And then on top of all that, let's do that in a way where we could map out three additional years of projects, kind of like a mini capital plan just for Poulsen. And let's try to leverage some grants in that capital plan as well and fund these things through, through the bond money, if there's funds left over of after year one. So that was the kind of, that was the plan, let's say, let's hit all of our targets. Let's do it in a way where we're going to have money left over to finish off the school with the overall goal being we want at the end of four years for Poulsen to look and feel like a completely different school. We want it to feel as close to new as a, you know, 1960s through 1985 school could possibly look and feel. So that was the last time we reported out to the board. At that point, we're targeting a, a construction cost for year one. Again, you're, and, and we focused, we split year one up into five projects. So some projects, let's call them. One was adding cooling to all the classrooms that aren't currently cooled. So these are the older wings of the building, they have no mechanical cooling right now, they just have operable windows and heating. Two was to replace all the 1992 mechanical equipment, that's all at the end of its life and any other miscellaneous rooftop units that exist in the school now. More on that in a minute, but that was goal two. Three was to renovate the gym into a, a facility that we would be proud to, we host high school games at that, at that middle school gym, it used to be high school, doing bleachers, doing, you know, the mechanical system, cooling the main gym, right now neither of the gyms have cooling in them. Adding cooling to the gym, as, as I learned over the fall, is a significant lift in terms of HVAC expense. I was definitely under budget on that one, say that right up front. The, or I didn't budget adequately enough. New lighting in the gym, painting it, just a refresh, redoing the floors, getting a, you know, world-class gym in there. Next one was the electrical system upgrades, of course, that's the generator for the emergency shelter. It's a whole building generator, automatic transfer switch, power goes out, boom, that thing fires back up, runs off diesel and empowers the entire facility. Nice to have from a school perspective, really nice to have for a shelter perspective. And also all the electrical switch gear that comes along with that, upgrading the main service of the building and everything. And the final project, the really nice customer facing one, along with the gym, is the, is the auditorium. So it is adding cooling to the auditorium, the auditorium isn't currently cooled, but it's also doing an entire kind of cosmetic restoration of the auditorium. It's getting rid of the ceiling that, that has asbestos in it. It's, so getting rid of that, replacing it, getting rid of all the flooring in the auditorium and replacing it, putting the new seating in there, wall treatments, restoration to the stage, that wasn't included before. New curtains, stage lighting, A V, everything. So that was something we, we were weaving into this design as well. So those are the five sub projects. At that point, I was levered, taking a, a kind of my knowledge base from past projects and pushing in some numbers in there. And said, okay, we, I haven't gotten into this yet, I haven't, I don't know what you initially designed. We, the design team was like, okay, we're going into some uncharted waters right now, but I think we're going to be around 11 million dollars for that year one, and then we mapped out a slate of projects for, for after that with a potential construction budget overall for the four years of 21.7 million dollars. So we, we went through the design phase, so we progressed into what we call the construction document phase. What I wanted to do was, one, we were preserving the design team, I didn't want to pull the plug on that and start from scratch and, and incur a whole bunch of extra costs. Luckily, we caught this just in time where we used all of our baseline knowledge and we're able to transfer those into construction documents. So this was not a project where we said, throw away all that old information. We took all that information that was accumulated over the last two years and just recalibrated it, added, subtracted, changed and did it at, at really no additional cost. I want to say we were 30 grand total, that was mostly for the auditorium improvements. So on a basically a million dollar design job, we, we did that very efficiently. Found a couple of things during the, the, the design phase where we definitely added some complexity and that's why I said the 11 million dollars was a little under for me. So some examples of some elements that gained in complexity was definitely the gym. When I priced that out, I was assuming we were going to put two rooftop units on the roof, maybe a little bit of structural steel. The way that building is set up, that was not possible to do. We worked through some really good design ideas and settled on the most cost effective approach, which was putting all the mechanical equipment on an adjacent roof and just beefing up the steel on that adjacent lower roof where our weight rooms are. This way you don't see anything on the roof, you don't see any ductwork snaking around the building. It is most efficient for air distribution, a whole host of other reasons, costs a little bit more. That's just an example. So when all said and done, we got the design documents done late December, early January. We turned it over to two estimating firms, one was Gilbane, who's handling our preconstruction on this, the other one was part of the design services right from the beginning, which was through, through B L Companies, the designer, they pass it off to a third party estimate. Their estimates came back, they were so close, I was jokingly blaming them of collusion. Usually they're, you're pretty far apart and then you, you reconcile back to a number in the middle. Our reconciled estimate was 18.3 million, fully loaded, that's with all the C M costs, all the general conditions baked in, a bunch of contingency. There's about two, two and a half million dollars in there of kind of what I call like, you know, their non-construction costs, they're, they are estimates for escalation, estimates for contingency, things like that. So it's not like it was like 11 versus 18, really it was like 11 versus like 14 and then putting in that, that cushion in there. I'll get back to that in a minute. So we had these two estimates come in, they were within $300,000 of each other, which is like really good. But we ran the process, we had a meeting up at Gilbane's headquarters. And what happens in those meetings, if you've never been to one before, is you have one estimating team, Gilbane's, another estimating team was the third party through B L. We walk through every single line that, that they have in their estimate and they basically argue their cases. Why, why were we here, why were we here? Really interesting process to sit through, was also one of the more constructive ones that I've been involved in over the years where each team was actually adding some value and be like, oh, no, I didn't look at it, I looked at it this way. And, and some of the numbers that they were even pretty close on, they, they got to in different ways, so it's really interesting to see. And we came away with a good estimate of, of 18.3, which is a little on the higher side of, of the two. So then, you know, now I want to know, okay, where, where was I off then? Because I'm using real project data from the past like three to five years that I escalated up. So we lined the projects up, what Gilbane was, did was they took those five sub projects and they broke out all their costs in each one. Then we had another call, we went through every one of them. And again, that's where some of those things came to light, where we're like, yeah, those, that mechanical system at the gym, the rooftops we wanted to do beforehand, this, this new system is definitely more expensive, but the right system. Another example is the, the V R F, which is the, the cooling system for the classrooms that no, that, that don't have cooling right now. Systems that I've put in over the past three years have all been wall hung units, so picture almost like what you would have in your house, just bigger. What's being designed into this project, which is 100% the right way to do it? I've always had to just back off on cost in past, in my past life is to put in two ceiling hung cassettes. So that it's, it's not on a wall blowing cold there and it's up in the ceiling and it's, it's distributing air throughout the room in a much more uniform fashion. Again, the right way to go is going to give us a much better product. Another thing that we found is we actually have to take down all the hallway ceilings to run all our piping. One thing that proved valuable was way back in the early design phases, there was an above ceiling scan done when we were thinking about putting ductwork throughout the entire building, which ended up not really being feasible. But we've, we, since we had those scans, we were able to see to run all the piping and conceal it all. We really had to remove ceilings in two areas, which isn't a bad thing, because actually in year four in our plan, we had replacing all the hallway ceilings, so that actually just got kind of moved forward. Those are just a couple of examples, we would go on and on per project of what we thought was going to be versus where it is. Another big one was when they designed the new system originally, back in the spring of last year, they were never really paying too much attention to what was there in the 50% of the building that's cooled now, because they didn't really care, it was all going away. Now that we got back into that, the, the story I had heard when I started was, oh, we've got 12 rooftop units. We actually don't have 12 rooftop units, we have 12 penthouses that actually have three to six units per penthouse. So again, my number was like, oh, drop in 12 rooftop units, no, not the case. One really cool thing that came around during the design is as we got into the existing conditions, like, wow, the system in those areas, the way it's designed now actually really makes a lot of sense. It's giving us very good zone control, so for example, you have one of these small, it's almost like a residential style unit, but it does bring in fresh ventilation air, services one or two classrooms. You get very good zone control without having anything like V A Vs or any of the complexities that you would have put in with this new system. So we started designing towards that. So where we were left off is with this 18.3, we have a project that checks all the boxes in year one, actually checks some of our two, years two through four boxes, has an adequate enough cushion in it where we're not going to kind of cut our own throat on price. I'm pretty confident that, that this project is going to come in well under the 18.3. The beauty of the way this is laid out now is anything we come in under the 18.3, we just immediately apply that to years two through five. And we, right now, we sacrifice off the backend and we might add back as, as the project progresses. So from a financial standpoint, that's how it would work. We're hoping to get that three and a half million dollars back, I said 3.1 in the beginning, it's about three and a half back from, from Neck River today. Now that's next on your agenda. It's not, it's not critical to move forward at this point, because even without the Neck River funds, we could still afford year one. But it is something that we, we know we don't need it at neck right now, so we might as well bring it back into the project and just have it sitting there and, and plan for. Just to give a look into years two through four, to accomplish the year two tasks, which are the replacement of the roof and all the existing A C T tile in the classroom, we'd need about 5.5. If this project comes in at the 18.3, we would have about 3.5. So I'm, like I said, I'm hoping we can get in at least 2 million dollars under and push those into year four. But again, the, the plan was in the beginning, whatever we didn't get done in year two, in year one, and that we couldn't afford in the out years, we would push into our regular capital plan and deal with it that way. So building committee met last week, we talked about the estimate, we talked, we actually went through a full variance report. So we looked at the document that was sent out that I produced back, I think it was October, and it had all the sub projects on it. Where the estimates lined up with each one, what was direct construction cost, what was the, the overhead and contingencies and everything that were built in. And we, we really drilled into that level of detail, they supported moving forward. And also, so the next piece of the project is what we call the advanced procurement package. So this is Gilbane, who's our construction manager on the contract. They're going to be going out, they're, they're producing that now, a package to go out to bid with everything that has a long lead time, lead time. So it's primarily the generator and then the main switchgear. So we would order that in probably late April, early May, probably May, because we're going to try to get the bids out in, in April. Because those items have a year plus lead time. Then the actual project will be bid in probably November, December of this year and we will start as soon as school gets out in, in September. Again, our, our goal, another thing I should have mentioned earlier, is there is no more disruption to the school. Or very, very minor disruption to the school, I should say. So we shut the school down next summer, they already know that, they're already planning for that. We do all the abatement, we do all the invasive work. The school is go, has agreed to leave the gym and the auditorium offline for us through December. We're going to work in those two areas of the building while we're occupied, so no problem, you could segregate them from the school. So there won't be any interruption to them, they have another gym that they could use in the auxiliary gym. So operationally, this plan makes a lot of sense for them as well, too, because they just get to, get to move on. We did engage.
So Ben, and just so we can, a lot of information. But it's actually a lot of, and I guess, you know, for the public's benefit, timeline, you're talking 2026, though, right? This summer, no work is being conducted on Poulsen.
Correct, Poulsen is our only school online this summer. Every other school is offline for either construction or moving.
Right, so Poulsen will not, that work would be starting in 2026, the summer of 2026 and up through December of 2026, you were saying that's when they would have the auditorium, the gym offline. So all the other buildings will be online and then we would just have Poulsen be offline, so I just want to highlight that. I want to, just real couple of questions. When you talk about your budget, are you accounting, you know, that we have a federal grant, obviously for the generator project? And when you talk about funding, the, you said right now your needs to fund the project is 18? 18.3, and if we transfer the funds over to this, we will be at 20, the original project budget, right, of 21?
Yeah, yeah, it just kind of, it just kind of worked out that way, but the construction, the two different numbers, though. What we're working with is a construction budget of about, when, if the money comes back, of 21.78 total project, including all the design fees and everything, is, is more than that.
Yeah, okay. And then, but we have the federal funding. And I know that one of the big questions is, you know, even though we have a signed document, we have obligated funds with our federal grant. If, for some reason, and I think I'm hearing more and more confidence that if we have this obligation, that we should be fine. If we were not to be reimbursed for the generator funds, would we still have enough money in the overall bonding budget to complete the project?
Yeah, if, if the funds come back from Neck River, definitely. So there's two different grants, one is federal, that's a million dollars, that's through the Department of Energy. Then the other is $500,000 and that's state through D E C D. The federal one is, is locked in, or as much as a federal grant could be locked in these days. The state grant, the, the, we're in the final stages. Uh, the state grant, uh, the the uh, we're in the final stages. It's our, the funds have already been committed. Uh, we're just working through the final, uh, what they call financial assistance agreement.
So, so if I'm just saying, like, if for some reason the federal grant were to fall through, we just don't get reimbursed, you know, for whatever reasons, we would obviously fight that in court because we have a contract. Um, there's still enough buffer in the budget to cover those funds.
Correct.
Is right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that is understood. So because the important thing is we have to start going out with procurement now. And, you know, we're going to be bidding this stuff out and 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 putting together, uh, uh, you know, commitments to purchase things and um, and so the federal, hopefully the federal grant will come through, that ultimately should result in less bonding needs, right? If we continue to have our uh, federal uh, grant come through, but I just want to make sure that people understand that there's a possibility that if this blew up for some reason, whatever happens uh, uh, at the federal level. Um, we still have the ability to deliver on the project. We have the funds in place to fund it.
Correct. Yep, that's that's the long short of it is no matter which way you slice this, uh, year one is a go.
Yeah, okay. Um, and um, and I think that the uh, the goal is, the reason we wanted to transfer this back is doesn't mean that we want it all to be spent, right? But we want you to have that buffer. Plus, there's still procurement unknowns, right? The world is going through tariffs. It's going through a lot of different things right now. Um, and so you know, until we actually get actual pricing and commitments, you know, nothing's assured, right? You have really good estimates. I know you feel really confident in your estimates. Um.
They're very conservative estimates.
Yeah.
Very, very, because they, because there's no reason not to make them as such right now, because we know we we could afford the project. One last thing I was just going to close with before is um, that that we are hit, so the 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 kind of headline for all of this is that eighteen point three checks every single box that was part of the referendum. It meets all of those goals. So where we were originally at twenty six million. We're now at eighteen million for the same output.
Mm hmm. Okay. Um, so I think that's all great news. Um, I think um, the, you know, the next item, agenda item is to transfer the funds back so that you've got the resources there. If you, you know, when you need them and if you need them. Um, uh, and we've been assured and I, by the Neck River Committee that they're, they're fine with that. They they they, you know, they've been able to work within their original budget now. Um. So, I mean, I think this is all great news because we're, you know, I know a lot of people have been scratching their head, whatever happened to Paulson, right? But now we can say, hey, twenty twenty six, the year, right? Stuff is going to start happening. I- i- and let me, the auditorium, you're saying would they would start working on that in the fall of twenty twenty six or?
No, I mean, we we would actually do the abatement over the summer. We just have the the luxury, I guess you could call it, to working in that space occupied. So that work would continue through the summer. We try to get everything like noisy and all, and you know, it that a lot of the mechanical work would happen over the summer. Uh, so.
Okay, so by uh, so twenty twenty six is the year for Paulson, though, pretty much.
Twenty twenty six is the year of Paulson. We've actually changed our calendar to that.
Okay, all right. So um, I don't know if there's other questions. I know there's a lot of information. I think Ben is very uh, um, uh, detail oriented and obviously is living and breathing every, every decision in this project. So we appreciate that. Um, but is there any other questions then in terms of timing of the project? I mean, I feel much better because I was really worried about the grant and what happens if we don't get the grant and how does that play out, you know? Um, but I feel much better about proceeding. Um, you know, so that he can continue to keep this on the timeline, um, because obviously people are getting a little anxious now. When is this going to get done, you know? Um, so any questions from board members?
I I have a few, but I think they're really better discussed in agenda item eleven, the next. Thanks. Maybe Ben could just be on the line.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I was gonna say, Ben, I was gonna suggest thirteen units on the top of the building as opposed to twelve, but you know, you know.
Well, I think we've got fifty four, so you're in business.
Sounds like you're going conservative, so.
Okay, all right. So um, so we'll move on to item number eleven, which is uh, what we were just talking about a little bit. Item number eleven is discuss and take action to approve a resolution to transfer funds between the projects within the eighty nine point two million dollar appropriation and bond authorization for cost related construction of a new pre K. Uh, grade five school on Mogartown Row, renovations and improvements for the conversion of Brown Intermediate School into kindergarten grade five school and improvements and upgrades to Paulson Middle School.
Moved.
Second. Okay, and then you received the actual resolution in your packet. Maybe Genie, we could just have it put up on the screen for the public's benefit. Um, and all this is doing is it is taking money that the board had moved in twenty twenty three out of the Paulson budget. It was three million, four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. And we're just moving it back to the Paulson budget. When we did this back in twenty twenty three, a reminder, the new school was in the height of all the craziness with construction. They were concerned that they weren't going to have enough funding in place. The state, in order to go out to bid, requires that you have all your funding approvals in place. So by transferring this money over. We were hoping we were going to get some or all of it back, but we wanted to make sure the school could proceed with its bids. So um, here we are. Two years later, and luckily we can transfer it back, all of it, which is fantastic. Um, and um, and so this is just kind of this, I I kind of templated this off of what we had done back in uh, June of twenty twenty three, and it's just kind of moving the money back again. And it's all, this is a board of selectmen is empowered to do this in the bonding resolution. Um, so Bruce, you had some specific questions?
Yeah, first, yeah, first off, um, the motion itself is is um, got a grammatical or a yeah, not a grammatical, a factual error in it. It lists Brown as a kindergarten to grade five and Brown has been repurposed to a pre K. To grade five, so it's a small thing.
We were taking, okay, well, we were modeling this off the original re- resolution, so. Um, that's fine.
Um, my other question is, and and maybe Stacy could weigh in on this as well. Do we have monies encumbered for the um, demolition of Ryerson?
So i- it's not that money is encumbered, it's it's still resides within the Neck River Elementary School budget. That's what we talked about at our last meeting. So, um, and they are not accounting for this money. They still have funds available to do Ryerson, at least the estimate of Ryerson. Uh, at least a budgeted.
So what, and what is that estimate again? Just refresh my memory.
God, was it?
Then at one point one or something like that?
Yeah, I think I want to say one point two sticking to my head. I haven't looked at the brown budget in ages, but I'd be the uh, Neck River budget.
Yeah, over a million, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was over a million. And at least the the messaging we got at our last meeting from the 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 school committee, if you recall, was that there are funds in place, even when this is getting transferred over to Paulson. Um, and they want to go forward with doing the study on um, hazardous material study to, so they can actually figure out what the cost really would be.
Okay, so I mean, I I think it's important that we don't consume all the funds of the eighty nine million until we know that we can afford to. Um, that we've got the money set aside to to properly do the, the demolition of Ryerson.
And I noticed that A- A- Adam from Cuyers just raised his hand. So he's obviously the uh, project manager for um, Neck River. So if you want to promote him, Genie.
He can kind of give us an update, but there you go. Hey, welcome. Hello, I figured I would be on the next item anyway, so this might be a good time to jump in. Um, so a couple of things. On the estimate for Ryerson in terms of what was anticipated and early budgets and all that, I believe the pre project. When I say pre project, I mean, before we got into design and, you know, the actual school uh, estimate was something around one point six. Again, that was a little bit before my time, so I'm kind of going off of recollection here. Um, the general consensus of Ryerson demolition at the SD phase was uh, coming up towards two million. Again, that was at a very, very rough, no design yet, because it was still schematic design level. So just want to put that out there because some of the numbers were hovering around one million and I don't, I don't think that is, that is correct, so.
So, so uh, Adam, I just want to comment because Stacy, um, uh, she texted me, but she can join us online. She checked back to the original construction budget prior to the referendum and it uh, one million, two hundred and twenty five thousand had been the number that had been.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. Yeah.
So, so to that point, um, uh, Peggy, as you were alluding to at the last meeting. Um, those are for all intents and purposes, old numbers, pre a lot of inflation, you know, no studies. So the next steps for Ryerson, presuming a demolition is is going to be contracted for at some point. Would be to conduct the hazardous material assessment. And then, once that scope is is compartmentalized, proceed with some sort of formal estimating and documents and all that. So you, you don't just go out and bid to get a demolition. You need the actual documents to substantiate what the hazardous materials are, what needs to be abated, and then the actual demolition thereof. So the point being is that, um, I just, I just received some updated pricing. I have to review it. For conducting that hazardous material is the assessment. The notion that was discussed at the last meeting is that that would occur uh, this upcoming summer, once Ryerson is vacated, so there's no conflict with students. And then an estimate would uh, uh, could be contracted for thereafter. So we're looking towards the the fall, so to speak, of this year to get an updated estimate number. With regard to monies within the uh, within the new school budget. Right now, it is, uh, it looks as though there will be a substantial amount of money left at the end of the elementary school project that could potentially pay for the the demolition of Ryerson. The problem is, is that, like we just talked about, we're kind of shooting, shooting darts here as to what Ryerson will be. And some of those numbers could vary by hundreds and hundreds of hundreds of thousands against a budget at uh, the end of Neck River, which isn't complete yet. So how much money versus how much it will going to cost, that is a diff- difficult uh, uh, item to to consider. But the notion that my takeaway from the last board of selectmen meeting and discussion and just some of the uh, general planning exercises has been that we proceed with uh, or a plan to proceed with the assessment and updated estimate, and that will give time for uh, the Neck River Elementary School to be complete. And so we'll, you know, for all intents and purposes, know what the end result will be after this upcoming summer when the new school is occupied. That said, the three point four eight five million dollars has been lockbox in a separate budget line item for uh, years now at this point, and not touched with the notion that that would be returned to Paulson. So the, when I say that there's, you know, anticipated to be a substantial amount of money left over, gonna what that number is, we don't know, but it's, you know, trending north of a million dollars is the general consensus. Um, that is net of Paulson money going back, which, again, the project team's understanding is that that money would be required to fund Paulson. Um, so that's, just want to kind of lay out where we're at in terms of Neck River's budget. Yes, there's anticipated to be a lot of funds. I can't guarantee that there'll be enough to cover a potential separate Ryerson demolition effort. Obviously, Ryerson demolition is not contracted for at this point. Uh, but at the same time, it doesn't appear that there will be so little money in Neck River that it's not even gonna, you know. It's not even going to contribute to Ryerson. Like it's, it's, they look like they could align towards the end of the project.
A- a- and that's where I think we're also in a situation with Paulson, where we might have uh, leftover project funds, especially if the grants end up being um, uh, fully um, funded. Um, that we could have funding left over in the Paulson budget as well. So I, we just don't know what Ryerson is going to cost. Like I said, there was an earmark of one point two million dollars in the original budget, but um, that is, the intention is to have the money to take the school down, but you know, do we sacrifice like not doing the auditorium at Paulson in order to keep money to tear a school down? You know, that's, that's kind of where we don't want to be making those decisions. We want to make sure we're doing the projects correctly and then pulling together all that fu- all that funding at the end to, you know, move forward on the demolition.
I will say from a procedural standpoint, um, it may be cleanest from, I mean, I'm just narrowly focusing on Neck River right now as the grant funded project that it is. Um, to move the Paulson money now, so the general ledger, project financial, financials align with the grant commitment value with the state. Right now, the town's budget, general ledger suggests that it's three point four eight five million dollars higher than what the state thinks the project is going to cost. So to, um, if I'm understanding Bruce's point and concern correctly. Uh, I think there can be a difference between having financial tracking, you know, keeping that money within Neck River, but then it messes, it could mess up and confuse the state audit process versus moving the money back to Paulson where it originated, have the project financials for Neck River align with the grant commitment through the state. And then it's just a function of when that money, that three point four eight five gets spent. And if it needs to be a separate, you know, Ryerson demolition move or what have you, that can happen later, but at least we can have the project financials for the state portion of Neck River match with the grant commitment. So difference between where the money is moved versus spending the money, so it's not encumbered for something unintended.
Right. I think, you know, Adam, you're really, really close um, to uh, the point I was trying to make, which is the the demolition component of the project was a part of the Neck River. Um, project, not part of the Paulson project and moving money back into Paulson. Um, without somehow encumbering it, um, runs the risk of us spending that money. And then finding ourselves short on on the demolition. So whatever accounting methodology we use to to make sure that we've got adequate funds and with the understanding that Ben can execute on his near term plans without that money. Uh, my interest is just seeing that there is an adequate conservative amount of money set aside specifically for Ryerson. I just don't think I have the stomach or the stamina to have another academy conversation around Ryerson. Um, we just need to execute on what we promised. Um, back when um, all of this uh, bonding was approved. So, I, if Stacy has a good way to do that, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable. I'm, I'm happy with that. I just don't want to get down the road and say, well, we've, we've, we've spent all the money on Ryerson and we're short on um, the Neck River and so we now have to figure something else with, did I say Paul?
But I think the estimate, you know, there was a, 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 there was a million two that was earmarked, right? This could end up costing us two million. So I think, I think we want to though, short change a project, we need to deliver what we promised on Paulson. At the expense of taking down Ryerson. So I think that this board would have to have that conversation then, you know, are you going to take six hundred thousand dollars or eight hundred thousand dollars out of the Paulson budget? Because Ryerson came back a lot higher for, in terms of, uh, to me, the priorities are to make sure the school plan is implemented, which is um, updating and upgrading the facilities. Um, and so, you know, this was originally money budgeted for Paulson. And, you know, we will, um, uh, I think we'll have to have another conversation six months from now, like see where we land, where does Neck River close out? Uh, we're hearing that we're going to have at least a million dollars left over, potentially even more than that. Um, and then see what the estimates are for Neck, uh, for the demolition of Ryerson. And then we look and see where the Paulson budget is, you know, so maybe we can scrape five hundred thousand dollars back from Paulson to add to the you know, Neck River money and then have enough for the the demolition. But I don't know, I don't think we can. I just, we're not going to have that answer today, I guess, is my point.
What I'm hearing from this conversation, though, the good news is the money is there. It's, it's put aside, the one point two, whatever it was, is there as expected. So I I don't know what else we can do at this point, other than continue on the process.
Well, no, no, Scott, I think Adam was very careful to say there is going to be money available. Um, in all likelihood, but that until the project is closed out, he can't give any
Specific number, right.
On on what it is. So I think the current, um, the current wisdom um, from the project is that it's a number around a million. Um, but it's not a final number until it's final.
Well, I think that's true, that's true with anything, though. I mean, that's true with the Ryerson number, the Paulson number. Until it's done and bid out and completed, we're going to be doing this constantly. So I just don't want to, I want to make sure that we're moving forward and actually getting the stuff done. And then we figure out how we pay for Ryerson at the end with the pockets of money. Um, and it sounds, you know, um, I don't know, I I think the right, we took this money away from their budget, and I think the better thing is to move it back. Which is what was originally intended.
Cleaner, right?
Yeah, and then it doesn't mean that the Paulson team is going to go rough shot and spend it all. He's got, he still feels like he's very under budget, even with what he has. But I think it's better to have it over here versus having to sit, sit over at Neck, Neck River. That's all. And and I think, um, But I think it's better to have it over here versus having to sit, sit over at Neck River. That's all. And and I think um. Um, to Adam's point, it's just going to be cleaner when we close out the project to have this off the books now for the state compliance and all that stuff. So.
So it's an important conversation. I'm glad Bruce raised it again. I mean, at the end of the day, it's, it's, you know, I, I think all of the folks that are on this phone call right now. Are planning for it. So I think everybody's thinking about it and uh, it's in everybody's heads, which is, which is what we want. So I, I think it's, I think it's a good conversation.
Just another suggestion, if I may, um, because Adam's point is a very valid one about having the state numbers tie. I've been down that nightmare many times. And it is much easier to do when they tie, especially when you get through audit, which takes two years plus. Um, another suggestion is I wouldn't want to shortchange Paulson now to, because of a project, a s- a different project coming in over budget. So if we had one point two million and it comes in at one point four or whatever, but something we can do is we move the money now. It, it makes our books clean. We start working on Paulson. We finish off neck, neck finishes off, we get an estimate for Ryerson. That estimate says four hundred thousand dollars more than we have. By that point, we go back to Paulson and we say, okay, our grants came through, the project's moving, the project's not under bu- uh, the project's under budget. Now you take just what you need and pull that back over to Neck River, separate from the state project and then not, and then do the demolition from there. That keeps it very clean while you're doing the transfers.
Right. Well, yeah, so I don't necessarily think I'm disagreeing with, with, with what you're saying. It's um. I just want to avoid the, the, the endpoint where we say, okay, now we've got to do Ryerson. Oh, we spent all the money. We don't have it. Um, and, and so while this project was to renovate schools, it was also to dispose of Ryerson. Um, um, with demolition. Um, so it, you know, they're, they're all, it, there's just a lot of moving parts in all of this. So. I, I don't object to moving the money back. Um, I just object to us spending the funds, um, leaving nothing left. Or.
That's a good reminder, Bruce. I think for all of us as we move through the process. Now, Adam and Ben, they've got the experience. So whatever. You know, they think is going to be cleanest for managing the books, you know, I defer to them on that. I just, I do like having that kind of. You know, devil on our shoulder whispering in all our ears, saying, make sure that we've got money at the end of all of this to knock that building down. Now, don't misconstrue.
Wait a minute.
But you know, we need to, we, we all need to be cognizant of that because it was a very prominent part. Of all the community discussions leading up to the referendum that Ryerson would be torn down. So, you know, that's a commitment. Uh, I think that we need to maintain for the community because we've seen. We've seen what happens when we let buildings sit and I, and none of us want to be there again. Well, and we got a, we got several buildings we got to deal with. So that's going to be another meeting to talk about that. Oh, yeah. And, and I think that um, you know, Ben and Adam, and I know certainly Graham. Has heard over and over again, you know, Ryerson, you know, is a priority. You know, there were other choices that Neck River would have liked to have spent that money on solar panels. Let's face it, you know, we'd have a net zero school. And um, you know, our, our energy bills, unless we get our power from Canada, um, would be significantly reduced because uh. We would have the, you know, actually, it was going to be a hundred percent, right? Self, uh, if they put the solar panels on. But hearing from the board, priorities, Ryerson was a priority, that money has been not touched. So. Um, but they still have to open the school and they got to finish off the project. And there's always little things that pop up and. They also have contingencies they have to work through too. So. Um, I guess, I guess I, I think we, we have beaten this to death a little bit. Um. Well, well marked from Bruce and Jen and Scott, you know, um, and but I think, you know, the right thing is to move forward, at least to move the funny back. So, so with the original budgets in place, and then we'll just keep watching it and making sure that we're prioritizing that demolition as part of the decision making process. Okay, so are we?
Still on discussion.
Yeah, I was going to say, so um, I was just going to say, I, I will amend the motion to, or I would like to amend the motion. To approve the resolution uh, to uh, adjust the description of Brown to be pre K through grade five school. Um, and with that.
Moved.
Second. All right. Um, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, great. Okay, well, good. Good conversation, important. Um, and we are going to be hearing from our facilities committee, I think, at our next meeting. And they've been thinking a lot about this and Ryerson is certainly one of those assets that they've been um, identifying is, you know. How we're going to move forward on that. So this is all timely and important that we talk about it. So thank you for that. And thank you for all the hard work and, and making sure this product, these projects come in uh, at or below budget, which is awesome. So. Wish, wish you, uh, wish we could say the same about some other projects in town. So.
We get those squared away too. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, I know. I know. So um, item number twelve. Um, is discuss and take action to award a contract to C and C janitorial for maintenance equipment in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand five hundred and thirty three dollars and forty cents. As recommended by the ad hoc new school building committee for the Neck River Elementary School and to authorize the first select one to sign all documents. And contracts associated with this award vendor on the CT state contract budgeted to Neck River Elementary School.
Moved. Second.
Okay, any questions on this? This is just the continued procurement of, of uh, thanks for the new school. Um, any discussion? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Yeah.
Uh, I was just going to say, this should be um, the second of last uh, votes of this nature for Board of Selectment. There's one more quote of a substantial value, which I'll put in the next time. Um, it's available, but we're getting to the end of this. We're still trending on the, on the plus side.
And thank God, we're ahead of this. Trade war, right? So, you know, I mean, the good thing is we, we're kind of winding down now. And so we don't have to worry about some of those procurement thing. That's where it scares me a little bit on the Paulson side. So um, okay, great. Um, item number thirteen. Um, is discuss and take action to approve an additional services proposal and change the scope of the existing contract with Q and M architecture in amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. For the development of information materials related to the proposed new Academy Community Center Building Project Referendum to authorize the first select to sign up contracts and documents associated with this contract.
Okay.
Okay, great. So I'm in not intending to spend, we got kind of an estimate from Q and M. This is basically to put a virtual walkthrough for the academy school. So people can really understand what they're getting um, and help put some materials together. We think it's going to be less than twenty, just because there's a lot of materials that have been done by the building committee. Um, but I wanted to just have some funding here to make sure that we got, you know. Um, uh, we can put together something so people can really understand what the project is about for the referendum. Um, and I know this is normally something that have gone through the building committee, but given time constraints, I mean, our first public information session is in two and a half weeks. Um, we kind of needed to get them moving. So we will try to minimize as we get a conversation with the architect on Friday. They've actually done a lot of renderings already, so we're not going to be having to pay for that. Um, and they actually had started and done a virtual walkthrough for part of the building. So they're just going to add some components to that. So I'm hoping it's less than twenty thousand. Any further questions on this? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay, great. Thank you. Um, item number fourteen is an update on the lease regarding the communication tower at. Uh, eight Old Route seventy nine. Um, we had talked about this a ways back. Um, just to remind the public, um, the town had sold. The property across the street from the ambulance facility, but it retained the revenue rights for the uh, communications tower there for twenty five years. That lease finally, that agreement finally expired. So we have our equipment on that tower. Um, we went through two years of different negotiations. Do we put our stuff on another tower? Do we try to buy the land? You know, do we, we, it kind of went in a lot of different avenues, but um, it, it basically resolved itself. The property owner um. Uh, re-upped their agreement with American Tower who constructed the tower and owns the tower. And so now there's a, a, a new lease agreement in place. And we are going to be allowed to stay on the tower essentially for free. So we're not getting any revenue anymore from it. But we will at least be able to keep our public safety uh, equipment on the tower for free. So I wanted to update you on that because I know we talked about different scenarios where the town might actually try to go in and, and. Um, and own the tower in some way uh, through a revenue sharing agreement, but that is off the table. Um, so I just wanted to update that. And so this new le- lease agreement is basically allowing us at no cost to have equipment. Uh, on the tower. Um, and that's what's in your packet. And this was reviewed by council, correct? I think Sam, you're on. I don't know anything else to add. This was reviewed by council, right? I know you, Jody, it had been working on this with you.
Yes, yeah, we went back and forth to. To kind of throw a wrench in it, uh, Russo is the property owner, went out and made a, a deal with a third party rental company to. You know, to help get his revenue better with American Tower instead of just deal with American Tower directly. So they wanted us to sign it a stop or that we're releasing, relinquishing all rights to the revenue and all that stuff. And. Um, we wouldn't sign it till we had an agreement with American Tower and we could stay there. You know, on, with our equipment uh, for free. Um, so, so we've got that squared away. We'll, like I said, we went back and forth a couple of additions. If we do expand our footprint with inside the uh, equipment shed, we do, there is, there are some application fees, um, but the rent's not going to go up. Um, the same thing, if we add anything on the tower, there's an application fee and a fee to do a uh, structural analysis on the tower. That's, that's in the lease, but. Our radio rack that's in there now should accommodate any future expansion um, of the radio system um, without having to increase our footprint. So we should be good without having to spend.
So, you know, no harm, I guess, is really where this came out. We lost revenue, but we knew that was, we didn't own, you know, that was a deal that was cut twenty five years ago. So. But at least now we don't, we're not looking at a big investment or um, uh, annual uh, funding commitment to be on the tower. So.
He sounds pretty good.
Any, any other questions on this? Okay, great. All right. Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fifteen, or actually, did I read the lease, discuss and take out to approve the lease agreement? Did I read that? I can't remember.
Yep.
Okay. Um, yeah. All right. Well, good. So Sam, we're good to go. Um, I, I just want to talk, you know.
You did not Peggy. You only did number fourteen.
She did fourteen. Number fifteen is discuss and take action to approve a lease agreement with American Tower asset sub LLC for the communication tower, eight. Old Route seventy nine and to authorize the first select one to sign all contracts and documents associated with this lease.
Moved.
Second. Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. All right, great, Sam. Now you can get this finalized. This has been like a saga for three years, two years, two or three years. Um.
Cross one of those.
Yeah. Uh, uh, item number sixteen is discuss and take action to approve an application to the uh, local transportation capital improvement program, lots of for sidewalk and crosswalk improvements along Boston Post Road. Uh, at the West Wharf Road Dudley Lane and Cottage Road intersections.
Moved.
Second. Okay, this is actually um, has been something that I know the police department had been wanting for quite a long time, but because these crosswalks aren't state roads. You know, we pretty much got stonewalked for a long time. And then um, uh, finally, there's been an openness to putting them in. Um, and um. Now, you know, lots of funds are open for pedestrian improvements even on state roads. So that was kind of a newer thing that happened in the last couple of years. Um, and so these are, um, I think there's been a lot of uh, people wanting these crosswalks. Um, and so I think it's a great thing for the community. And then a hundred percent of the construction is covered by lots of. Um, so I don't know, Rob, if you just want to spend a second. I, I have to say it's very, it's astounding to me how expensive uh, crosswalks are. Um, but the other thing we get out of this is also that sidewalk, if I am correct, Rob, right? The sidewalk on West Wharf, which is something we had identified in a study that we did connecting the surf club to. Uh, this is going to be the first phase of it as part of this project, having a sidewalk on West Wharf.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, can, can you hear me? Yeah, sorry. I'm uh, actually on the train to New York City for a funeral. Uh, so I'm trying to keep this, stay as low as possible here on the train. Um, but yeah, this project is a lots of project. We're looking to install um, three crosswalks. Um, you know, as part of uh, you know, different uh, traffic study that we had done by SLR and uh. Numerous calls that have come in through the board of police commissioners and the local traffic authority. Uh, to make this a more viable lots of project, we had decided to uh, incorporate some sidewalks. Uh, particularly um, the, the downtown center to uh, Surf Club um, that was studied under a UP WP uh. Uh, study uh, a few years back through, through, through the SCROG, uh, BL companies had performed that. So we're going to get that portion on West Wharf completed in conjunction with this uh, the crosswalk. Sorry, it's, I'm in Stanford. Um, yeah, and then there's also a section of sidewalk we're going to do at Dudley Lane to provide pedestrian accessibility from the auxiliary. Parking lot at Hammond Asset, fronting Boston Post Road over to um. Uh, Dunkin' Donuts and uh, Lenny and Joe's. And then we're also going to be providing a crosswalk at uh, Cottage uh, Cottage Road over there. So Cottage. Dudley and um, in Lantern Hill, West Wharf with providing some uh, pedestrians uh, interconnectivity with sidewalks at two of those locations. So. As Peggy said, this is uh, lots of has made funding available for these pedestrian improvement type projects. So it'll be exciting to. Incorporate crosswalks with uh, some sidewalks.
Obviously, the West Wharf one, is that on the golf course side?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, we've, I, I've met with their uh, their, their grounds uh, foreman and their uh, I guess their equivalent, their superintendent there. And they're amenable to uh, to the sidewalks.
Yeah, I think this will be a really nice first step as we look at that whole corridor. Um, and lots of you have to have a minimum of three hundred thousand dollar project size, I think. And that's where the crosswalks were kind of in that range. But then we started looking at how, how can we kind of bolt on uh, adjoining sidewalks. And so. Um, and this was identified as something we wanted to move forward on. So I think it's uh. Great. We're working through the cog on this and um, just want to move forward with it. And so once we get the grand award, obviously it will come back. This is to apply now. Um, but most likely with lots of, I'll be honest. You know, if you comply, I think with the whole process, I don't think there would be, you don't get rejected. You know, it's not a competitive bit, uh, uh, process or anything like that, correct, Rob? It's just really you submit it and they might modify things, but we should be in good shape.
Yeah, well, r- right now, we're, we're, it, it can be competitive at certain times, but right now there is uh, significant funding available. So the odds of us getting this, I think, are pretty good.
Any further questions for Rob? No? All right. Well, thank you. Um, and uh, all in favor of item number sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Excited to see that move forward. Um. And now we're on to item number seventeen, um, discussion of proposed RFP regarding the Surf Club master plan. Um, so Austin's joining us. This has been kind of on our radar for a while, needing to address the Surf Club. A lot of the public talks about it, you know. Um, and the, rather than just making like isolated decisions at on, about the, the facility, we wanted to have an overall broader vision. Of what the Surf Club serves for the community and what changes that we might want to consider and what investment we want to make in it. So. We wanted to move forward the Beach and Rec Commission, um, spend some time drafting an RFP. This would be to hire a consultant to then. Help facilitate the development of a plan. Um, and there would be a lot of public input and outreach as part of this process. So Austin, if you want to talk a little bit more about it.
Oh, actually, just before Austin gets started, this is listed as a discussion item. I'm wondering if we can't amend it to be uh, take action as well?
We don't usually do that for RFPs, um, because the funding's in place through the planning reserve, right? So, or, or actually.
We have money in the, our, my department.
Yeah, your budget. That's right. Because normally planning a reserve, we would vote on both boards. This is through your budget. So, so I didn't, I don't think we really need to vote on it. Um, but we want to make sure that the board is comfortable with proceeding, obviously with this. And um. Um, so go ahead. And, and, and Bruce has the liaison too. I know you were, you were part of the process that developed the RFP.
Thank you. So, yeah, myself along with the Beach and Rec Commission, um, you know, developed this RFP to go out. To bid for a consultant to help us develop a master plan. Um, so, you know, we, we kind of. Tried to do an exhaustive RFP to make sure we covered in the scope uh, exactly what we're looking for. Um, so this will be a study of the entire park. Um, parking lot, roadways, the building, uh, et cetera. You know, lots of public input. This is important. Um, the public will have a lot to say. So their, their ideas and input will be. the public will have a lot to say. So their, their ideas and input will be, you know, incorporated into what will be a master plan for the park uh, through multiple public information sessions, um, surveys, meetings with the consultant and the Beach and Rec Commission. Um, so you know, this is a, a long-range study. Um, similar to what we all did for the strategic plan. So you bring in a consultant to help you develop the plan along with the community. Um, to make sure everything's covered and everybody has their voice heard. So that, that's kind of what we have here. So the dates you see on there are just fillers. Um, so once we get approval to send that out, I'll put firm dates on there for when bids are due, bid openings, et cetera. Um.
So my one question is um, that, you know, this is getting in, there's a lot of technical analysis that would be needed as part of this. So this isn't, you know, it's, you, we're going to be looking for somebody who can actually understand, you know, coastal uh, what, what, what regula- regulation. So um, I'm just wondering if the um, we add some, you know, because I think there's probably going to be two phases to this, right? There's going to be kind of the broader like strategic objectives for the Surf Club. And then there's going to be the next step of actual actionable plans. And so I'm just trying to think this through a little bit, right? Because it is pretty broad what this is when you talk about um, uh, sea le- sea level risk assessment, um, the, the building, um, and then you've also got programming, right? Uh, so I'm just wondering if we want to like break it into two phases. I know you, I didn't get a chance to get back to you on this before we came to the meeting, but I'm just trying to think through and I don't know if the board has a view and Br- or Bruce, you know, you know what I'm saying? Because there's really kind of like the strategic piece and then there's the technical piece. Um, and I feel like the consultants might need to have a little bit more direction about what their actually deliverables are in here. Um, because there's going to be, need to be some technical assessment of uh, both the building as well as the grounds. Um.
So I was able to, while I was putting this together, um, review some other master plan, um, RFPs that towns similar to us have put out. Um, so I, I stole and borrowed from each of those plans, um, to make sure that we tried to cover the broadest range of topics that could be discussed.
Yep.
But I'm okay with doing it in two, two phases, if that's what we want to do.
I mean, I, what are your thoughts, Bruce? I, I'm just trying to figure out, like, I, I feel like this is a, a lot, right? And um.
It is. And I think, you know, part of the value of getting this out is we'll hear back from um, uh, potential contractors on what they think is the best way to, to think about it. Um, and if, you know, if we start to get some of that feedback, like, you know, along the lines of what you're saying, I think we'll, we'll suss that out pretty early on. Um.
Do we risk confusing them at all, Bruce? Like, that's.
I don't, I don't think so. I think like Austin said, his model is picking and choosing the best of the, of, of other RFPs out there. So I, I, I think there's very little chance that he's put out, or this, this would be considered a confusing document.
Okay.
And it's, you know, it's one of those, you, you got to take your first baby step before you can um, take your first big step. And that's really what this is. Um, and then I would just add in the context of um, an expected report from the facilities committee, that report will by definition be incomplete because it won't include any of this. And that's no fault of theirs. It's just this, this pro- you know, this process needs to um, begin so that it can ultimately complete um, the work of the facilities committee.
Is it, I, that, that sort of stole my question, but is, so is it, has it been Austin already coordinated with the facilities committee already and the work that they're doing? Uh, I just want to make sure it's not cart before the horse or vice versa. You know what I mean?
No, I think I agree with Bruce that this is a, a key part of what the final report from the facilities committee will include, and this will include the full master plan. So it's kind of taking it off of their shoulders to do and having the Beach and Rec Commission along with board of selectmen and the public to give input. And then we can then hand over the master plan to the facilities committee for their um, guidance and, and along the way.
Are they in the loop though? I just want to make sure there's communication between the two.
Well, I'm on that committee. So um, we have not, they do know that there is intention to do this. I don't think they've been updated. They're going to be coming reporting to us. And I think my thought is that they should be part of the uh, team, you know, um, that um, maybe i- interviews consultants, like we should have a panel. And I think there's some skills on that committee, so they can at least have that vision, that lens, right? Um, you know, this will be Beach and Rec Commission driven, obviously, and Board of Selectmen driven. But I think so they're in the loop and they're making sure that we're, you know, incorporating their concerns and questions. Um, because some of the things that we've been talking about at that committee level is, you know, building and grounds and the location of that in the, in the, in the park and how it's, i- if we, we want to get them out of there, it's not an optimal place for them to be, but we got to figure out where they're going to go, right? So that, that impacts public works. It impacts a lot of other things. And um, so I do think they need to be really coordinated as part of this process. And because I did speak to Austin, I said, oh, have they looked at the RFP? But I don't think they need to look at the RFP, but I think they should be involved in the next step.
My question had to do with timeline, not for the RFP, but for the master planning process. Austin, do you have any sense of, is this a year-long project?
E- exactly. Yeah. My, my, it, I, I envision a, a year-long. Um, because it's going to require many um, public information sessions, gathering of data, developing that data, putting it out to the public, getting more feedback. Um, so yeah, I think a year is a good, good timeframe.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to get this moving forward. So I think I'm glad that, you know, the commission has taken this up and, and that we can kind of really.
Perdue. I know we did that design. Bruce, you and I were on the board of selectmen or Al too, when we did the design of the building with an architect. I remember going down there and having a, a view of what the building could look like. Um, so it's been many, many years. That was, that was probably my first year, so eight years ago.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, realistically, the, the um, the idea that we would renovate that building um, is probably not going to be on the table. Um, if we think about a 50-year plan, um, it's, it's, it's probably going to be something more dramatic. Um, like raising that building and, and then um, constructing something new that is appropriate for what we expect to happen along the coast.
Agreed.
Um, but Al, just to, to build on, on Austin's answer to your question, um, we, we really need to spend time with the community to identify what we want the Surf Club to be. What function do we want it to serve um, above and beyond just being a beach? And I think that's going to take time.
I agree. That's going to be important. Um.
It does serve a lot of purposes. It's when you got the athletics, you got a restaurant. Yeah. I mean, think of all the different things that are down there. Is it a wedding facility? Gosh knows. Events.
Yep. Bocce courts.
Yeah.
So, um, all right. Well, so I think um, proceed, you know, I think you, you've heard from the board and you've got a good start. And we just make sure that, you know, we'll, the board, you know, I know Bruce will keep us involved in the Beach and Rec's process and we'll also try to tie in. I would suggest for the interviewing panel, including somebody from the uh, facilities committee to be part of this, so they can kind of participate. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about that, maybe who from town staff too should be a part of it. Um, just, you know, you know how it is. It's always good to get by in at different perspectives as we move forward on this. So, um, great. Well, thank you. And then we, we don't need to vote on it. So it's just uh, continue, proceed. You can get this launched. And um, and I think that's it. We, I know you have a hard stop, Scott, at 10, right? So we're open to citizens' comments. Were there any hands raised?
There are not.
Okay. Well, I guess hearing no objection, meeting is adjourned. So thank you, everybody. Great job. Got through a lot today. So thank you.
You landed the plane, Peggy.